We will start with the 12th, 2019 Committee of the Whole Meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath here. Alderman Seenor.
Here.
Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderman Tylin.
Here.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Madam Chair, a quorum is present.
Okay, do we have approval of the February 26, 2019 Committee Meeting minutes?
We'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Treasurer's report.
Thank you Chairwoman DeSensio. The corporate fund in the month of February had a beginning balance of $5,974,192. We took in total receipts of $10,89,984. The corporate fund had total disbursements of $9,75,160. And the corporate fund had an ending balance of $6,989,160. Update on debt owed to the city. I can tell you that after the last two and a half months, we are on track. Last year, we averaged about $10,500 in I-Drop offsets, which is the state comptrollers program for debt recovery. And we are on track so far this year to make $17,750 a month. So it's going up quite a bit. That's the end of my report. Chairwoman DeSensio.
Any questions for the treasurer? Okay, we all received the Office of Budget and Management contract report. Any questions on that? Moving along to presentations, we will start with Mr. John Kinnaman.
Chairman DeSensio, thank you very much for giving us this opportunity. Over the last two years, since we began this discussion with Springfield and Sangamon County, I've had an ongoing obligation from time to time to be able to update the council and to make myself available as much as humanly possible during the development period. And that's all I'm doing today. This is a courtesy, and this is something that I feel is really very important, that as we develop the project, that we continue to give you an update of what's going on. I'm in town today with our president, Rod Shury. We have meetings with the Illinois EPA. We have begun the process of getting our air permit approved at the Illinois EPA. We've also submitted a plan to Sangamon County for our major site approval. Those are the two things that are going on, and I apologize for the presentation because I think it's not very different than the last presentation that I had before the council when I spoke to you in December. Other than that, are there any questions that any of you have with respect to where we are in the project, or anything that I could answer for you at this time? If there's not, chairman, thank you very much for this opportunity.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
And we have one other presentation, is that correct?
I think it's with the project.
Okay, so just keep going. Clerk, will you read the ordinances tabled or remaining in committee, please?
Will do. 2017-103, 2017-49, 2018-110, 2018-545, 2019-008, 2019-050, 2019-103, 2019-104. And is it?
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion. We bring out 103 and 104 to move to debate.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
And I have been asked to remove 2019-050 entirely. Any questions about that?
Do we need a motion on that?
I don't think so, do we? Just to remove it?
Motion for withdrawal.
Okay, so I move to withdraw 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving along to CWLP.
Would you like to take 102 and 104?
Oh, yes, 102 and 103, I'm sorry.
103 and 104, sir.
103 and 104.
Or 103 and 104.
2017-103, an ordinance amending Chapter 170 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code ordinances as amended by adding Section 170.17.68 regarding the exemption of registration fees for properties purchased with public funds.
Move for debate?
Second.
All those in favor? Or any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. CWLP?
All right. 2019-117, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a letter offered-
104.
We did 103.
We didn't do 104. We only have 103 on here. 103 and 104.
103 and 104 on-
Oh, 2019, 103 and 104.
You guys did the, did you want-
Did I say the wrong-
2017-103 out?
Ralph Asper, 103 and 104.
But there's a 20-
You just did 2017-103.
I was saying 2019, I apologize.
You just did 2017.
I just said 103, didn't I?
Yeah.
My bad.
So you might want to bring-
Is there any back in committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, so-
Sorry about that.
So 2017-103, back to committee. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and bring 2019-103 and 104 out of committee.
Second. Yes.
Are we discussing it, or just bringing it out of committee?
Then I move for debate.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
On 103, correct, chairman?
103 and 103 first, yes, that's mine.
Would you like me just to address? You may recall that 103 and 104 were held last time because we had to give legal notices. This is an amendment for an annexation agreement, like all annexation agreements, we have to hold a public hearing. So this was held in committee pending the publication of the public hearing, and so 103 and 104 would be appropriate to set forward for debate for the council meeting on the 19th, which is what it was published for. And I would mention also, there are going to be some amendments to these, and also final documents on some of the others, and this has to do with the road adjustments. And so there are three others on here also that would be set forward, but for debate.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Turner.
So, this may not be the appropriate time for this question, but what would be the impact on the city's infrastructure needs with these two?
Do you want to discuss the substance now, or is that? Yeah, we should read them into the record.
Yes, please.
2019-103, an ordinance approving an addendum to the annexation agreement with Piper Glen Development Corporation to improve Cockroane Lane, along with Savannah Point subdivision, for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for debate?
Second.
And Nate may be the appropriate person to talk about the technical items.
Okay.
There are actually really a total of five of these, and they relate back to the, just to summarize, letters of credit that were basically filed with the city, some, as many as 10 or 15 years ago. And so these are modifications to those old annexation agreements relating to the nature and extent of the road improvements.
That's correct.
Call it.
Does this, this ties all with the developer's agreement we approved last week, correct?
This is cleaning up older letter of credits. So that's moving forward. This is cleaning up older letter of credits.
Okay, that's-
Dating back to 2003.
Okay, thank you.
And to, just to kind of, to the extent I don't want to go down the rabbit hole here, but the old developer's agreement was, there was a legal question of whether or not the city had at that time followed the appropriate statutory, Illinois statutory provisions, or was a dispute about that. I think that's a fair characterization. The way that the original ordinances back from approximately '05, somewhere in that timeframe or earlier, provided for a linear calculation based on the frontage of a subdivision on a road, and allocated a certain amount, at that time I think it was $125 per linear foot, but it required the city to build a three-lane segment. Well, these three-lane segments are only appropriate, and I'm looking to Nate to correct me, but are only appropriate given a certain amount of traffic. So it was such that not only because of the expense of the three-lane segments, but also it would never warrant the traffic improvements that a three-lane would do. Therefore, the thought process from Public Works' point of view was to try to modify it to a two-lane segment that would actually match up with what the traffic actually is or would be in the foreseeable future. And so it's going to be building segments in those locations that would have been a three-lane, except for the cost and except for the amount of traffic.
That's correct. And the cost for a three-lane section estimated today is $1,000 per lineal foot, and we're getting $125 per lineal foot, so we would have to eat the $875 per lineal foot cost, which would be a substantial burden on the taxpayers' dollars at this time.
Okay, I guess in all of that, my question was answered, but I didn't hear it. So could somebody just very plainly tell me what would be the impact, the financial impact, on the city's infrastructure needs with regard to this?
Well, we have some cost estimates where it's basically split 50%, in order to do these improvements. I believe that they were averaging anywhere from $30,000 to $40,000 per project with these five projects, or $25,000 to $50,000.
So it'd be about $150,000 total?
A couple hundred thousand, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Are we going to put in sidewalks, are they necessary, and bike lanes, or any of that stuff going in with it?
Not with these improvements. However, when the city does a project, we've adopted a complete streets policy whenever we do an expansion.
Alderman Seenor.
So how are you characterizing this? Is this, you said cleanup, but is it really a cleanup, or are we, for lack of a better word, kind of letting some people off the hook?
Well, we're milling and overlaying the roads. We're adding structural stability to the road and improving it to an asphalt section. Ms. Wills.
Are these agreements that we had made, and they said on the books, and now we're, are we, I mean, because I see a lot of these, and are they in the corporate limits of Springfield, or are they in, because the one that we're talking about, and we're making improvements to, it looks like, what are we doing, really?
Well, these are all annexation agreements, so the parcels have been annexed to the city of Springfield. And like I said, we were milling, doing a mill and mill and overlay, three and a half inches, putting an ag wedge in, some ditch improvements where we need to.
What fund is this money coming out of? Do we know? Mr. Sark, mayor?
Fund 95.
Fund 95. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Hanauer.
And in this, these funds, they have to be used in the neighborhoods that were, as they were, that in front, by the neighborhoods that were, where they were established, right?
That's correct.
Where the, okay.
Hold on, would you say that, repeat that?
The funds that we're getting from the developer has to be used in front, in the, I guess, the adjacent roadway of the-
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said, I thought you were saying that the funds from Fund 95 had to be spent.
No, no, no.
Because I was going to say none would ever be spent, other than in-
No, it, the developer's portion-
Okay.
Has to be used in the adjacent roadway of the-
Right.
Development, in a sense.
Okay, so we're moving this to debate?
To debate, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
2019-104, an ordinance approving an addendum to annexation agreement with Williamsville State Bank and Trust Number 9603 to improve Coke Mill Road along Heineken subdivision for the Office of Public Works.
Move for debate?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now CWLP.
Now CWLP. 2019-117, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a letter offer for extension, approving a 12-month lease extension, and authorizing additional funding in an amount not to exceed $73,488 under proposal number UE14-17 with Roland Machinery Company and Kamatsu Financial Limited Partnership for a lease on a Kamatsu crawler for a total amount payable of $440,928 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2019-118, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing the execution of contract UE19-12-70, trouble truck for TND with Drake Scruggs Equipment Incorporated, in a total amount of $103,303 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2019-119, an ordinance authorizing payment of membership dues to American Public Power Association in the amount of $59,443.38 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2019-120, an ordinance approving a telecommunications contract service agreement with the Springfield Public Schools District 186 for all facilities for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Public Works, 2019-121, an ordinance approving an addendum to annexation agreement with Setano Park Subdivision LLC for improvements on Lenhart Road for the Office of Public Works.
Move to debate?
Second.
Jim, does this have to be debate?
121.
121, yes?
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay, thanks. Move to debate.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
2019-122, an ordinance approving an addendum to the annexation agreement with Spring Creek Development LLC for improvements on Coke Mill Road for the Office of Public Works.
Move to debate?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2019-123, an ordinance approving an addendum to annexation agreement with Hope Evangelical Free Church for the improvements on Lenhart and Bunker Hill Roads for the Office of Public Works. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2019-124, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental professional services contract with Green and Bradford Incorporated, previously approved pursuant to Chapter 38.35, for contracts under $25,000, and authorizing an additional payment of $12,500 for a total amount not to exceed $32,500 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am, I have an amendment. I need to amend the additional payment from $12,500 to $20,000, adding $7,500 to that total.
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, we need a motion on the amendment, and you seconded it, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then any discussion on 124? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2019-125, an ordinance extending RFPPW 18-21 with Heritage Environmental Services, and authorizing an additional $160,000 for a total amount not to exceed $320,000 for 2019 spring and fall household hazardous waste collections for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2019-126, an ordinance accepting the low bid and authorizing the execution of contract number PW19-01-83 with Kenny Contractors Incorporated for the 2020 concrete patch program in an amount not to exceed $746,500 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2019-127, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing execution of contract number PW19-01-78 with Harold O'Shea Builders for the 2020 Brick Street Maintenance Program in an amount not to exceed $580,910 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one item of discussion from Director Mahoney, you don't have to come forward, just, could you check who the contractor was for the brick work on Park Street from Lawrence down to Washington Park roughly four years ago? Having some concerns about the quality of that work from the constituents on that street. Thanks, Mark.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2019-128, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing the execution of contract number PW19-01-77 with PH Breton &amp; Sons Incorporated to furnish construction on the 2020 Batumidis Overlay Program for an amount not to exceed $6,546,500 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2019-129, an ordinance accepting donation of property owned by St. John's Hospital of the Sisters of the Third Order of St. Francis located at 300 North 9th Street for construction by the National Parks Service of a memorial for the 1908 Springfield race riots.
Move for consent?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yep.
Alderman Seenor.
With Ms. Turner's permission, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor, with Alderman Turner's permission, I'm sorry.
Alderwoman Turner, is that okay with you?
Is it okay with you? Yes.
Alderman Proctor.
I think I already got permission, but same request. Yeah, as a co-sponsor.
Anyone else? Actually, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Noted.
Any more discussion?
Who would I?
Oh, okay, all right. Alderman Fulgenzie as well. No more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2019-130, a resolution notifying the U.S. National Parks Service, the property located at 300 North 9th Street along the 10th Street rail corridor will be donated for construction of a memorial regarding the 1908 race riots upon eligibility to be in the national park system.
Move for consent?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Proctor.
Same request.
Saying, Alderman?
Diddle.
Okay, so everyone, same as last time? Okay. Do you have that, clerk? Thank you.
Yep, I do, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Finance, 2019-131, an ordinance authorizing execution of a redevelopment agreement with DK Collection SPI LLC for financial assistance for the property located at 300 to 320 East Washington Street, utilizing central area tax increment finance funds through the Office of Planning and Economic Development for an amount not to exceed $7,600,000.
Motion for consent?
Second.
Any discussion?
Is there a presentation?
There is a presentation.
Then before the presentation, you want to do housekeeping really quick? We got an amendment we got to do.
Sure.
The proposed amendment number one, to increase the amount to $7,650,000, I think there was an increase from $400,000 to $450,000 for the property acquisition number. I think that amendment should be in front of everybody.
So all those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Question, that only gets it up to, so that, what's the total that you're asking for in the amendment?
It'll be $7,650,000.
Okay.
You're adding the $450,000, you're $54,000.
Yeah, just basically a $50,000 increase.
Okay.
And I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor to the ordinance.
No. Oh, Jesus.
Noted.
Any other discussion?
You realize there's alleys, Chuck, you might want to back off.
Hey, 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 we don't talk about this anymore.
Go, chairman.
Yes, Alderman Seenor.
There's some concerns, have those concerns been addressed? And I hope that with the project, if the project is passed, did it pass the EDC? Did they get, did it get their blessing?
I believe it didn't, we're going to hear about it right now.
Okay, well, if it did, if there's, if we're going to have a problem with parking, that means there's going to be extra people downtown, which is what we're after. So I hope that, I mean, I know it's a bad thing that we don't have enough parking, but I hope that is the problem, so, because it'll be a good thing, because that means there'll be a lot of people downtown, spending money and increasing our tax base. So I want to hear how the problem is being addressed.
Thank you.
Good evening, and to address your first question, Alderman Seenor, this passed unanimously through the EDC yesterday afternoon. So that, we'll get that in just a moment. We'll have Alan Williams come up, and he's got a presentation here for you, and I think with his presentation, he will answer all of your questions. I started working, well, actually, Alan and Glenn Garrison started working a year ago, July, August, something like that, in 2017. I first met with Alan almost a year ago, and so we've been working in the Office of Planning and Economic Development with him ever since then. So without much further ado, I'm just going to turn it right over to Alan, so he can explain everything to you. Clicker? When you're ready, yeah. You and your, yeah, okay, and there you are up there, okay.
It's fancy.
Don't be shy, Alan.
I try not to. Alan Williams, for the record, I actually want to, before I get into the presentation, I do want to address the potential concern there on the parking. But actually, let me back up. Number one, thank you for the opportunity to present this and discuss this project with you guys this evening. I also want to give a special thanks to Glenn Garrison. He's been on his journey with me since, as she mentioned, Val mentioned, July of 2017 when we first met, to really talk about opportunities in this city. So I definitely want to make sure I acknowledge him and the work he's been doing, because I think without his endurance and his encouragement, I don't think we would be here today. I wouldn't be here talking to you guys about this, okay? So I just wanted to acknowledge Glenn. With respect to the parking, we, one of the things that we attempted to do, Mr. Garrison reached out to Downtown Parking Company as we were chatting with Ryan Bandy with Bend Oates Properties, to make sure that we try to have enough space for the entire project. And so we made a generous offer, at least we thought, to Downtown Parking, Inc., to acquire their parking. I think we made an offer of about $90,000 for that parking lot right behind Bend Oates Properties. And they rejected the offer. They said that, hey, we'll, you know, we'll consider the offer to sell you that portion of that parking lot if we can have ownership and manage parking on site. That's before we even shared with them what the project consisted of. One of the things that we did let them know, and Glenn reported back to them and mentioned that the parking was going to be pretty much self-managed, because everything's electronic now, so there wouldn't be a need for a management company to manage parking for that site. On top of that, there would be some concerns with having a flag in place with a portion of that being leased out or managed that they would have in terms of parking with a separate company. So, that was one of the reasons why we couldn't move forward with that partnership to acquire that property behind Bando's Properties. That actually cost us probably about sixty parking spaces throughout the entire project. So, in our effort to, you know, address the shortage we knew was there, the initial project was only going to be about eight stories, we went up to ten stories. So, right now, we're looking at about a total of two hundred and sixteen parking spaces, half of which, and a little bit more than half, will be for public parking. We did some internal studies with the brands with respect to the type of visitors that will be staying at the hotel, and so the room, hotel only has ninety-five rooms. We currently, right now, in our feasibility study that was submitted, only have an occupancy rate of about seventy percent. So, that would leave in essence about another twenty-five parking spaces that will be available outside of peak time for parking. The other component as well is the FEC, the Family Entertainment Center on site, is only going to be in operation in the evening time until the late hours that you guys approve, so from five or six until, you know, midnight or one, if that's the case. So, if we ever ran into an issue with parking, something that we have discussed is working with local parking lot owners around there to do lease agreements, to lease out their parking space in the evening times only during that time as well. So, that's our effort to try to address any parking concerns that we feel will not be there from just studies that we've done and conversations we've had with respect to the different uses and operations of this mixed-use development. So, with that being said, I want to move forward and actually talk about the great things that we're looking to do here in this city. So, we're looking at the, it's a clicker here, all right, that's a little different. The executive summary is what we're going to focus on, I'm going to, in consideration of the time that you guys have in your schedule, we're not going to go through the entire packet, it's fifty-five pages long, I don't think you need to go through that. We also spent quite a bit of time trying to reach out to most of you guys here on the City Council to inform you of what we were doing and just try to answer questions as much as possible. So, with that being said, we really want to respect your time and just try to focus on the key points here and answer questions and walk you guys through our process. So, with respect to the executive summary, we have, I'm gonna focus on the project highlights, we have a ninety-five-room hotel that will include a fitness center, a business center, meeting rooms, and indoor swimming pool space. Currently, right now, Marriott and Hilton are the two flags that are in competition, we will say, for the site with respect to what we're going to do there. Next, we will have luxury apartments, seventeen luxury apartments right now, there's some conversations about possibly being able to increase that if we can, as we continue to evaluate the budget and we move forward here based on how things play out on this level. We are going to have some retail space available, a little bit on the ground level, and then also some on the Family Entertainment Center portion of the site, which will also house an outdoor terrace area for meeting events and just outdoor activities as well. And then, we will also have Family Entertainment Center there, which will include bowling, billiards, a lounge, the outdoor TV screen, that we hope to host movies on the rooftop, different events as far as sporting events for the adults, but also for the kids, especially with the fact that you guys have the Chosens Museum right by. We look forward to being able to possibly partner with them to do some cool things to get the kids and the families downtown as well throughout the weekend. And then, lastly, as I touched on earlier, we're going to have public parking, a total of about two hundred and sixteen parking spaces. We do have a letter of intent or a letter of interest in essence from Hilton that's on file with their brand availability for the product that they would like to see there, and so I had extensive conversations with Marriott, they did an internal impact study to see how the property, if we chose to go to extended stay route, would impact the residents in out south, as well as the Spring Hill Suites coming out south, and so they're going to come back with us with a counteroffer to a traditional product that's not extended stay, or even with the soft brand option that could possibly be in their autograph collection that would compete with the Doubletree, is what they would say. So, that's where we stand right now when it comes to the two flags, we're pretty excited about it, they're pretty excited about it. The conversations that I've had with them, they've all indicated that downtown is considered the bull's eye for this city, and they would like to start seeing some activity in the bull's eye instead of around the bull's eye. Let's move forward to the site itself. So, as we discussed earlier, the municipal parking garage is really a critical component to it, without it, the project does not happen. Ryan Bandi has been awesome to work with and been very patient as we've been working through this process. His property, we have under contract, that purchase agreement is on file with the Office of Planning and Economic Development, and as I stated earlier, the small parking lot behind, that would have been critical and would have added about another sixty parking spaces to the site, we were not able to come to any terms on a sale with downtown parking for. But outside of that, that is the entire site. So, here's the structure. One of the things that we know is definitely needed in most mid-sized and small-sized cities, so to speak, is creating that eat, live, work, plan environment that people experience on the coastal cities or the big cities. So, if you're looking at this particular rendering here, the architect really did a good job yesterday at the EDC meeting to really present this, I'll do my best not to butcher her work, but the ground level is where we will have the main entrance there off of Washington. As you can see, it kind of boasts the patio and open space that allows you to see through down to Adam Street as well as right there on Washington Street. And so, the first level, there will be separate entrances for the FEC, which will be closer to Third Street there on the right, the middle portion will be the hotel entrance, and then on the left-hand side, which we will run along Fourth Street, will be the private entrance for the residents. The second through fourth levels, those will actually be the parking lot areas, and so right now, we're slated for about sixty-one parking spaces based on the layout that we currently have, and they're still tweaking that to see where we can possibly try to pick up more spaces to be more efficient. The setback area where you have the pillars there, that is the family entertainment area. It's actually going to have outdoor walking space around there, so people can walk along the front, it's in the side, in addition to the core portion of where everything is going to be housed, and then on the backside of that, we will have that rooftop experience that you typically will find in some of the major cities. And then, the white portions there with the glass next to it, those three floors are currently slated for the hotel. And then, above there, the next two levels will be the actual residential apartments for rent. So, here is the rooftop, open rooftop area that we're pretty excited about. Along the Fourth Street side, which is really the bigger portion there where we couldn't finish out the rest of the property, that's where we're going to have that outdoor screen, outdoor TV screen, and there will also be meeting space available for the public to be able to house birthday parties, special events, if they want to do that as part of the Family Entertainment Center. With respect to the Family Entertainment Center, I want to touch on that a little bit. We, I don't know how many of you guys are familiar, or gals are familiar with Lucky Strikes, Pinstripe, or Top Golf, that's the type of experience that we're going to create. And one of the things that, you know, was critical as I was working with the owners of the property was to explain to them that the normal pricing that franchises sort of lock you in at, that you have to sell your food for, or even the entertainment experience, we can't bring that here, there has to be flexibility, especially since the hours of operation are going to be different. And so, that's why they decided to work with New Brunswick to design everything, and then New Brunswick has recommended two management companies that will manage the FEC portion on site. And what that means is that will allow us to be flexible with the hours of operation, that also will allow us to be flexible with how much we charge on the set menu for the folks that are going to be able to enjoy some food and beverage there at the adult bar there. And so, that's critical, obviously, because, you know, you go to big cities and they may want to charge a drink, you know, whether it's a fountain drink, they may want to charge you seven or eight bucks for a large, and that just isn't going to fly in this particular market, and that's one of the things that I had to continue to kind of drive home as we were discussing this project thoroughly. So, that's in essence the layout, what you're going to see on the experience side there. Let's see, what do you guys have next? Okay, the finishes. So, we're going to have modern finishes with respect to this property, stuff that you will find and, you know, in some of the major cities, but more importantly, the type of finishes that a lot of college students, college graduates are experiencing on college campuses nowadays, where those universities have the funds to invest in housing and create an awesome experience for those students beyond just the academic environment. And so, we're expecting that the two bedrooms and two bathrooms are going to pretty much average roughly around sixteen hundred bucks, please do not hold me to that, but that's what I've been instructed to kind of promote at this time. That is also going to include access to the fitness center, one parking space per unit, and then there will be a separate lounge for the residents, and then an outdoor rooftop space where they will be able to have and share outdoor furniture and barbecue grill and things of that nature. They're also going to have, let me back up a little bit, the building will go after and seek the LEED certification, so that way, we're going to have some solar panels, it's going to be energy efficient in many different ways, so that's one of the things I did not note prior to getting to this slide. Next one here is just to give you an idea here of a lounge area for the residents and what a fitness center will look like for those individuals. So, here are your options when you think about an extended stay hotel. The top right corner is what will be considered a Marriott Town Play Suites, it's, I mean, these pretty much are studio apartments in essence, in some cases with one bedrooms, but what it allows is a full kitchenette for families that are here in Springfield doing tourism or special events that if they want to bring, you know, some groceries or go to county markets, spend some money here, they actually have a refrigerator, put some things in and possibly cook if they want to do that. And the whole concept behind extended stay is to encourage patrons to extend their stay. And so, currently, right now, the downtown Springfield market typically, which you guys know sees travelers, you know, for here at least two or three days, we may want to try to get them to consider being here for an extra, you know, three or four days, be here for five days, and just really relax and take in more of the tourist options and as well as the attractions that this city has to offer. To the left of that is the Hilton product, it's a Home Two Suites, and then at the very bottom is the finish for IHG Embassy Suites with respect to the finishes and interior options. We're going to get into the budget. Currently, as it stands, the budget is fifty-six million two hundred thirty-nine thousand three hundred fifty-four dollars as of today. Hopefully, we can hold the line on that as best as we can, but that's kind of where we stand now. One of the things I wanted to highlight in here is that Abby and Val have really done a good job of identifying what are TIF eligible reimbursements possibly, you know, for the DK Collection if they are able to properly, you know, comply with that, getting all the proper invoices and paperwork in, but that is in essence what we're going to be looking at and working with the Office of Planning and Economic Development. Let's see, next page there, it gets you to full budget, I know you guys have this. Here's one of the most important portions of the presentation, what type of jobs are we're going to create. So, we're looking at four hundred to six hundred construction jobs, it's going to cost or take six hundred thousand man-hours to build this, we're looking at about eighteen months from the first shovel going into ground in terms of completion. One of the things that we also are going to have are summer jobs for the youth in the city here during construction time. We're excited about that, we've been discussing internally what number makes sense and what could work, but there's been a range thrown out between fifty to fifteen, rather, sorry, fifteen to thirty potential summer jobs for youth during construction time, okay? Post-construction, we're looking at a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty local full-time and part-time jobs. We're also have had conversations about extending the summer job efforts to college students and some of the high school students, even once the property comes online. We know that the city of Springfield does a good job and has a good effort here, you guys, with the City Council with promoting job opportunities for youth, we wanted to make sure that we, you know, did our part and tried to contribute to help increase that number as well, okay? Local economic impact. The Mayor's Office and Office of Planning and Economic Development, they have received all of our financial data, the performance that are in here, the feasibility studies, all that information that speaks to how these numbers have been calculated, but we're anticipating roughly about two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars in the first year in terms of hotel and sales tax that the city will benefit from. Obviously, this is not accounted for the individuals that will be standing at this hotel, but then frequenting some of the local bars and restaurants downtown, which I think will be a welcome sign here for some of the owners of folks in the Adam Street, as they call themselves, corridor there. Project capital funding page, this is where you really look at where's the money going and where the uses and square footage is laid out for this property. So, we're looking at a total of two hundred and forty-two thousand square feet that is going to encompass this entire site, with twenty thousand slated for the retail, a hundred and three thousand four eighty-one for parking, twenty-two thousand for residential, the hotel sixty-six thousand, hotel lobby twenty-five hundred, the terrace is thirteen thousand three seventeen, amenity pool and meeting level fifteen thousand three twenty-seven. And so, that's where you get your grand total. One of the things that I real, I will touch on here, as you see, that hundred and three thousand square foot, that's all parking. That, that's, that's, that's critical, and so that's what makes the whole TIF request that we have important. Without the TIF request, I'm not sure this project will financially be able to stand on its loan, stand on its own, rather, with having to encompass that amount of parking in the square-footage layout. And that's in large part because of the pricing that can be charged for downtown parking. There's no way that we're going to be able to charge big-city prices for parking. I mean, in Chicago, you may pay twenty-six dollars for the first forty-one minutes, then it goes up to thirty-five dollars for the next sixty-one minutes to eighty minutes, and then it goes up even more, it has about four stages of four levels. In some cases, valet parking in Chicago, you're paying, you know, twenty-five to thirty-five dollars, just to give you comparison, out in DC for a project that we have completed underwriting for is a Marriott AC out by Arlington Cemetery, we're generating just in revenue alone, one million dollars in valet parking just for that project alone as a standalone hotel. There's no way we're capturing that type of revenue or charging those type of prices in this market. So, that's why that TIF partnership, which, you know, we consider a true public-private partnership with the city is critical in order for this project to even have a shot at, you know, really making sense and being able to work, okay? The other component that I wanted to highlight that's critical, I mentioned earlier in the intro that Glenn Garrison and I have been working on this since July twenty seventeen. Up until that point, ownership has spent eight hundred thousand dollars just to get to this point for me to present to you guys without a commitment from the city. Some of you may be familiar with operating businesses, or even just, you know, have kids and families and things yourselves, homes, but I don't know too many people will invest that type of money without a guarantee that they're going to be able to move forward. So, it speaks to the efforts that has gone, gone on by the ownership to present a very viable project to the City Council that is well thought out, that more importantly, will ensure that this project, once it starts, it will finish, and more importantly, it will thrive. Here's the fun part, I think this is my last slide before I take any questions. So, how do we make this project work? You know, who's involved in this project? And I know that the media and folks have been wanting to know who the ownership is and all those individuals, and I felt that it was appropriate that it's shared first here with the City Council, the folks that actually have to make the decision on this project, allow you guys to control the narrative and the story behind what we're doing. The Office of Planning and Economic Development, including the Mayor's Office, has the information on full ownership, majority ownership team and all that stuff, but I'm just going to walk through these bubbles just to kind of help you guys understand the picture that we've put together and the team we've put together to ensure that this is a project that this city will be able to be proud of and something that you guys can really brag about here in the region. Ambridge Hospitality and Evolution Hospitality, they're going to be the hotel management company, they're the largest hotel management company in the US. They manage over eight hundred hotels, every brand, every sub-brand, and these guys' customer service is thorough. And when I say thorough, meaning that they offer the opportunity for all hotel owners to participate in weekly calls to monitor the progress and the activity of that hotel service performer to make sure things are moving smoothly, that way, if there are any problems that they detect, they're able to possibly step in and address them quickly. One of the things that they will also do, if you have a hotel that's struggling, they will personally send a team out on the sales, marketing, and even assistant GM side to get that hotel performing above and better than what it should have been. So, that's one of the reasons why we, you know, decided to use them for this project, because we thought they would be a great fit. When you come into a market like this, you want to make sure that things are done right, done thoroughly, that you have folks that are accountable, but more importantly, they're reliable. So, we're excited about the partnership that Ambridge has with them, and so our point person on that is Rich Bricker, he's out of Schaumburg, Illinois, a high regency's office is there, but he's in his packet as well, if you look on the second page of their owner, their leadership team. Leopardal Construction is our contractor. Say, who's Leopardal Construction? Leopardal Construction is a half a billion-dollar construction company based out of Hoffman Estates, and they also are now in the West Loop downtown Chicago. They've partnered with, I wouldn't say a competitor, but another developer in Sterling Bay, and have built quite a bit of the entire West Loop up. This construction company has experience with respect to building properties situated by train tracks or public transportation, and so that was one of the things that was critical, this, with the location being situated next to the Amtrak station, we want people to have experience with making sure that the property that they're constructing is going to be soundproof as much as possible and provide an experience for the residents and the patrons that, you know, we don't have to worry about sound issues while they're trying to enjoy themselves and enjoy the experience there. What's awesome is that they remind us a lot of O'Shea Builders, and we appreciate Mike being here as well. Mike, their firm is pretty much going to be the go-to subcontractor for us on this project here in this market. We had a conference call probably about a couple weeks ago and really had a chance for them to kind of get to know each other and discuss things that most of us in this room probably wouldn't even know what they're talking about, but when they got off the call, one of the things that Leopardal shared with me, they said, Alan, you know, these guys, we like them, they sound like us, first-generation construction family, but more importantly, we speak the same language. And they said, that's not common in this construction industry. So, to hear that obviously provided some comfort for the ownership and comfort for me, as I've been pushing O'Shea because I'm familiar with the work that he's done in this city. And so, we're excited about working with them, we're excited about Leopardal and how they're going to really assist Leopardal through navigating the city and working with the proper subcontractors that we know can perform and do everything we need to do. That also expands to the labor. That also expands to the labor. So with us tapping into TIF, prevailing wages, what we're going to have to do, we've already submitted through O'Shea Builders, a letter to the laborers' local 477 to ensure that their individuals have an opportunity to work on this project and our commitment to enter a project labor agreement with them at the proper time as we continue to move forward on this. So that rounds out the construction team. BNMO Design LLC Architect, that's Negan Moyer. She was here yesterday. I thought she did a great job presenting to the EDC. She couldn't be here today, but Negan we're excited about because she brings experience internationally with the team as well as her time with Perkins and Wills, which is a major architectural firm downtown Chicago. So she's done projects in Dubai, Saudi Arabia, London, aside from major projects in Chicago. And so she, you know, really talked about what we're doing here with the scheme of the design with, you know, not being too aggressive and too flashy, but making sure that, you know, we provide something that's modern, contemporary, and more importantly, in her words, humble with respect to the project and site that we're building there. So we're excited to have her on the team. She is a female-certified business as well with the state as well, so we're excited about that component, too. TBA, the engineering. The owners, as I stated earlier, have invested currently eight-hundred thousand bucks into this project so far, and they have pretty much frozen any more spending on this project, which would include bringing on a civil engineer. We've talked about CMT as an option. I know that Negan also received a couple cards from some local engineering firms here, but pending and hopefully if we're successful in this partnership that we're trying to build here with the city, then that's part of the next expense that they have to commission out to ensure that we get a geotech report done, surveys, and even maybe a Phase One environmental on the actual municipal parking garage site as well as Benno's property site so we can ensure what we're building and more importantly, if there's any remediation that needs to occur, we have that covered in our budget. Okay? So we're excited about that. And then ownership, which is what most of the media wanted to know. We're at that point here. I asked them to wait twenty-four more hours, and here we are. So ownership, again, that information has been provided with Abby and Val and also the, and the mayor as well. But WC Solutions is one of the majority owners. WC Solutions owner is an experienced real estate developer out of Chicago in addition to a political consultant with respect to that background there. I believe that owner started out working in politics there in Chicago before he became a real estate agent and got involved in developing mixed-use projects, strictly retail and residential in that city. And so we're excited that he's also part of the ownership team, is going to do really, really well for us, and he was one of the few that was important because he understood the state of Illinois compared to some of the other folks that are involved in the project. The other owner, one of the other, oh, sorry.
Did you say WC Solutions? Did you mention the name of the man?
DeAndre Allen, he's actually here, right here, standing there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, he came down for the trip. Thank you for that, Alderman. A Plus X Creative Labs, Senyo Adore is the other gentleman there that's involved with that. That particular firm is a pretty big firm. They're international with respect to what they do. They're an engineering firm that has contracts with, in Dubai, on the African continent, in London, as well as in Chicago and some of the border trade folks. And so it was important that, as you put the team together, you want to have people that understand Illinois. So they're based, I believe, out of Mount Prospect, and so we're excited to have them as part of the majority ownership team on this as well. And then we have out of Tallahassee, Florida, if I'm correct, New Legacy Partners Ventures with Alexis Morland. We're excited to have them as well involved in this. They also are part-owner of a major media company as well in that market in the southwest region or southeast region of this country. So that rounds out the majority ownership team. We're pretty excited about, you know, them willing to consider this project and think that it's something that, you know, is probably long overdue and more importantly, could be the start of something great in this city if we're successful in moving forward here and partnering with the city council. And I believe that rounds out my presentation. So I definitely will, you know, be quiet at this point and take any questions that the council members may have, but, you know, we're excited about the opportunity to continue the work that we have and see how you guys respond.
Alderman, hand out.
Thank you. Alan, thank you for the great presentation. These are kind of presentations we'd like to see when we, when we get these instead of just not much numbers and whatnot. So thank you also for, and Glenn, for the, your patience on getting us through. I know it's been a while and I'm excited for it and great job and look forward to seeing this thing go.
Thank you.
Alderman Proctor.
Yeah, this is truly one of those like unique and dream projects for downtown. I remember when Glenn reached out back, what was it, like August of 2017, and he started talking through, I was like, would the city be interested in, you know, helping with, you know, the garage and getting rid of the garage and stuff? And I said, heck, yeah, I think for the right project, yeah, I think this would be something that we'd definitely be involved in. And because it's, the garage has kind of turned into a liability and this has turned into an asset for the city. And so it's going to be a great thing for downtown because this project has all the stuff that, you know, downtown's been looking for, like, you know, that, you talk about that outdoor movie kind of theater kind of segment, the bowling, more apartments, you know, more housing stuff, so, and more parking stuff. So I'm truly excited about this project and I want to thank you for being so open, too, and informative on this thing because you reached out, too, and started talking about this thing six months ago, I think it was. And you've been great to work with and appreciate the information, everything you've brought forward. And so this is one of those things where the developer truly rolls out the red carpet and kind of says, we want to work with you, partner with you, and this is, this is how it's done. So thank you for that.
Alderman Domlin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Alan, I appreciate the opportunity to meet with you ahead of time and learn more about the project and appreciate the presentation here this evening, you know, and the interest in Springfield. This is wonderful if this comes to fruition. And, but I think it's important to point out that regarding the TIF ask, I believe it's thirteen-point-five percent of the total project cost, which is well below, well below the thirty percent number that the city usually kicks around. But also, it is, you're essentially getting the majority of those funds from your own, if this development succeeds and it starts generating TIF dollars, you're getting reimbursed a portion of the TIF dollars generated from that project. And that's what I like about it. It's not, like, we've had requests before, come before this council where there's been, quite frankly, millions of dollars being asked sort of as a grant fund and not coming from that project specifically. This, this is a great example of how TIF's supposed to work where a developer is being, as you said, this project wouldn't happen if it weren't for TIF. And if it is successful, it's going to generate tax dollars, generate tax increment financing funds, and the reimbursement of eligible costs are going to be done from that particular project. That's, I like that part about it. So thank you.
One of the things I want to do touch back on real quick because I know there is still work being done between the corporate councils for this entity and you guys' corporate council. The final phases for us, just to be very clear with respect to our process, I think I mentioned the civil engineer bringing those individuals on board to conduct some more geotech studies, Phase One, and surveys we will have to pay for. But I just wanted to kind of give you guys a snippet here or a snapshot into the debt financing process and what our debt financer is requiring of us, just so that way you guys understand the depths in which they are doing business. But one of the, one of the twelve, and this is just the starting point of information that they want from us, is the project overview or summary, a complete budget and draw schedule of the funding, a business plan including IRR, feasibility study, SWOT analysis, verification of liquid capital, proof of funds, LOI from any other lenders, management bios, experience, appraisals, engineer reports, permits, audit reports, third-party verification of cost of return, developer slash owner assets and net worth, current loan contracts and payoff letters slash debt schedule, renderings, architectural drawings, digital and layout, legal information, articles of incorporation, and government approvals. And so you guys fall in that government approval space, but this is what we have to submit to our debt financer just to get the conversation going. And they've already provided pretty much a letter of interest to fund this project pending these things here, and that's because we have a working relationship with them. But more importantly, what they're going to do is they will act as the distributor of those funds. They will take all of the equity from the ownership team, they will keep it, and then based on the draw schedule that has been developed and that they approve, whether it's eighteen draws over the life of the eighteen months, they will then dispense those funds based on the receipts, invoices, and information that's provided. So I just want to give you guys a small little preview with respect to just the intensive paperwork process that they're going to be under to ensure that this project is a success. So I thought it was important for you guys to, I left, I didn't, I didn't cover that, but I thought it was important for you guys just to be aware of that so that way you understand that, you know, if we say we're going to do something and we're moving forward, you better believe the checks and balances are there and the people that are lending us any debt is going to make sure that, you know, they have a chance to know of any kids we may have, future kids we want to have, or even, you know, things and experiences we've had in college, they want to know all that stuff, you know, and it, because they want to do a thorough check when it comes to lending that type of debt.
We understand.
So thank you for allowing me to speak to that.
Alderman Redpath.
Alan, thanks for meeting with me on this, and we've talked several times on getting this thing moving along. I'm tickled to death you're here and your presentation was amazing. You mentioned Glenn Garrison and Michael Shea. I mean, that's the quality of Springfield right there. Those two guys bring a lot to it. It gives us all a comfortable feeling, know that they're involved, and we're all looking forward to this. You're doing a great job. We're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Alderman Tylin.
I'm also very excited for this. I think that this is something that could definitely revitalize, as you called it, the Adams Corridor. I think it could definitely bring jobs, tourists, people just coming downtown for a good time. However, I was contacted by Steve Myers, who provided a letter, and Steve, if you'd like to address the council about your concerns.
Madam Chair. Myers' family has been involved in Springfield for a very long time, and we applaud this group that has taken the time, the effort, the dollars, the sweat equity, and everything else to bring us a magnificent project. This is exactly what those of us affiliated with Downtown Springfield Incorporated have dealt, have dreamt about for many years. You take at one location and transform it into something that we've seen here tonight. Kudos to this team. The reason I'm here tonight is there's another piece to the puzzle that we want to make sure doesn't get overlooked, and that is the parking resource that was constructed on this site in nineteen sixty. I don't think, I was, I was going to be born like two years later, right? Anyway, over the years, it's suffered a little lack of maintenance. The focus hasn't been there. We've dealt with other parking structures, be it the convention center or the one across the street. Interestingly, all of the larger operations here in downtown, the Wyndham across the street from us here and the President Abraham Laken, they, it just so happens they have large parking ramps directly connected. I don't know if that's coincidence or not. Obviously, the finances of this particular project allow for what it allows. What we wanted to bring forward was some bullet points to talk about what's left when we get this done. And we want this done because these are things that we've all dreamed about, and this team is the group that's bringing it forward. So with that, looking at the future, we have somewhere between a hundred-and-ten, a hundred-and-eighty, somewhere in that neighborhood, people that pull in at eight o'clock and leave at five o'clock. Okay?
Excuse me, how many, is that for the parking ramp, you say?
Correct.
How many?
It's somewhere between, well, it fluctuates. Some people move in, some people move out. It's somewhere between a hundred-and-ten and a hundred-and-eighty. I talk to those guys because I park over on the other side of the railroad tracks, but, you know, some people move in, tenants come, tenants go, that type thing. But these are resources that the city has maintained for, for pretty much the whole time since nineteen sixty. I know DPI did it the first twenty-four years and then the city took it over. So that being said, we want to make sure that those people that work at various places, people that ride on the Amtrak, for instance, that pull in and pay their money and go to Chicago, we hope they're coming from Chicago here, right? But there are people that pull in, go up to the city for the weekend, come back and drive home. So the point simply is this. With this project gives an opportunity for the city to move forward and make sure that all the parking resources that are necessary are in place for the day after we cut the ribbon and we all cheer and we, I asked at the EDC yesterday, I'm going to be in the first group that goes onto that roof deck to watch the sunset, right, from the bar? That's the coolest thing. We've been clamoring for that. They're bringing it to us. That's a great thing. However, we need to make sure that the folks that are here all day, every day have a place to park so they can go to work if they're riding Amtrak and the like. So with that, we wanted to raise those issues to this body so that that can be addressed. Thank you.
Question from Mr. Myers. So are you saying that if the city commits seven million dollars of TIF money, we want to make sure that the parking availability is equal to or even preferably greater than what we have now?
Well, obviously, the answer to that is yes. Understanding the MO of this organization and the hotel operation and the Family Entertainment Center believes that two-hundred is the number that can accommodate them. And I don't have experience in running central city hotels. We hope, I heard tonight, there may be a chance of more residential units. That might be a great thing, too, because that's another thing we've been all pushing for, I think. Everybody raises their hands. So that being said, it's those hundred-and-eighty folks, like I said, that drive in, I'm guessing all those people are represented in almost every ward, if not every ward, right, out of that group that parks there every day? They need a place to park, go to work, and it hasn't been hourly for a long time, so that doesn't work very well. I know the city many years ago went to a per-day fee, the gate opens and you park. Stay all day, go home. So these are parts of the puzzle that we believe have to be accommodated for downtown residents that, who park their car there at night. I think Chris Nichols Building across the street, there's some of those folks that park there. So it's not always office workers, it's always, it's also residents. So just want to lift that up as a way to make sure the whole picture is in clear view of everyone as this comes online.
Alderman Proctor.
So are you saying that, so basically, a hundred-and-eighty parkers will be displaced because the garage comes down, right?
I believe that's roughly the number that we're looking at. Like I said, some change here and there, but that's, that's a round number as of next month.
So is there other parking lots in your portfolio that they could be reassigned to, you think, or?
Well, that's where the unintended consequences come down, and this is what I mean by that. That's on my sheet that I handed everybody. Currently, there is a parking lot behind the Sangamo Club that is completely full. It has a hundred-and-thirty-six spaces. The people that are parking there primarily work at a place called the Illinois Board of Education. There are also twenty or so spaces that are the employees of the Sangamo Club that park there. So if you move people, that's the end, and then if you eject those people, where do they go? So that's why it's a domino effect. And we're just saying, moving forward, the attempt, or there should be an attempt or a commitment, hey, this is great, we're going to put this here, we got to deal with these other issues that are, because we don't want to force them out or something or get them to leave.
So I think Alan wants to respond on that, if that's okay.
Yeah.
So I want to throw to Alderman on, I can answer or respond to that after.
Alderman Pulcianzi.
Yes. How many spaces are in the underground parking at the old State Capitol?
Approximately six hundred, and the report that I received from Jay McCann, the manager there, last week was he had a grand total of thirty available. I know, I tried to find more, too, right?
I was under the understanding that he had lost thirty or forty percent of his business when the state relocated quite a few employees up north.
Well, what, 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 his comment to me last week was, I said, if this project moves forward, what kind of opportunity is there? And he said, I've got thirty spaces. So that's the answer that I got from him. You can. So, that's the answer that I got from him, you could, you could call to verify, I guess, but, I've got his cellphone, I'll give it to you after the meeting.
Alderman Redpath.
What about the Fourth and Capitol ramp?
Fourth and Capitol, as far as how many spaces are available? I believe on, on my sheet, you'll see, it was originally constructed with 425, the top two floors have not been usable because of spalling concrete for quite a while, so you've got maybe 325, 300, somewhere in that neighborhood, and so you're a little over half-full right now, but it's, it's that figure of 100, 150 to 180 that we're.
We're starting to narrow it down though, if we got, we got a few here and a few over there, we need to, you know?
Okay, well.
Alderman Senor.
You said you have that on the sheet, but this sheet doesn't, it says the current ramp.
Yeah, the, the current ramp.
Four, five spaces, and then the second, the second dot, but.
Right, right, the originally when it was built, it had 425, they closed the top two floors, so you're down to about three and a quarter.
So, is she, this information that we have, is this the Fourth and Capitol ramp?
Yes, this is the Fourth and Capitol ramp.
Oh, it's the Fourth and Washington ramp.
We're talking about the Fourth.
No, I'm sorry, Fourth and Washington, of course, no, Fourth, Fourth and Capitol, I, I, across from the INB.
Yeah.
I, I don't know their capacity or their, because they, they own that one, I think. I, if somebody knows the capacity.
You know the capacity, Mark?
I don't know the capacity, I know they have vacancies everywhere.
Okay.
That's what I, that's what I was referring to, Fourth and Capitol, not Fourth and Washington.
That would be, let's, from Fourth and Washington, you, Adams, Monroe, Capitol, about three blocks, okay, all right, I'm sorry, yield the microphone.
Alan Williams back, I attempted to address this earlier, and I wouldn't say attempt, I did address this earlier, we, you know, offered, if there is a need, number one, for more parking, we have no problem entering into lease agreements with the surrounding parking lots to accommodate the evening parkers when people are no longer at work. The other piece is that, if Mr. Myers is, is, is very, you know, concerned about this issue, I would invite him and encourage him to maybe return back to the negotiating table with the, Mr. Garrison, as that parking lot behind Bando's Properties would add an additional 60 parking spaces, which would get us close to 300, which would alleviate his concern. So, Mr. Garrison reached out, we made an offer of $90,000 to downtown parking, in which he, they rejected it because of wanting to manage parking, but there's nothing to manage on-site because it's electronic. So we can, we can really address his, his concern potentially here, if he will be willing to take that offer to the board and they give a strong consideration, and we, we figure out how to make that work, so we can get close to 300 parking on-site without having changed anything, and I'll have to worry about trying to fill these other gaps that we don't really know, and he doesn't have the information for it to stay. So, I just wanted to share that.
Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah, one of the items that we're having DSI work with regional planning on is surface lots, because I was selected to attend the Mayor's Institute, and one of the initiatives was, they were shocked how big downtown was, but the other, we have ample parking, we just have underutilized spaces. So really, we have to do the inventory with regards to what's used in the daytime and what's not, and vice versa, and maximize those spots, and so that's one of the initiatives, is to do the inventory of parking, as we pointed out, people are picking up different locations, and so, we'll make that happen and really identify what can be used in the off-time, you know, for instance, IML, Illinois Municipal League, can we use their parking at night, you know, and vice versa for a church, and so that's one of the initiatives we have to do, because you look at the bigger cities, Charlotte, or I think it's Charleston, they have it where you, you know, they want a building on every block, and so that's what we need to really analyze and make the best use possible of the current spots that we have, and move in that direction.
Right, and, and I would like to thank Alan for bringing up the issue of the small parking lot, it, as it currently sits, it, it carries 24 parking, there's 24 parking spots there, that would be three levels high though, right, to get to six.
It would be four levels.
Four levels high, okay, so, that's very nice, and I will take that back to the DPI Board, I'm just a member of the Board, I'm not, but, I'm, I'm but one vote. The critical issue here, and understanding, they may, they may have a need for all the people coming at night to bowl, or to go to the bar, or watch an outdoor movie, that's great, the critical issue here is people going to work, and that's during the day. So if Alan wants to commit a number of reserved spots, or something like that, within the parking structure, if they're able to get more spaces to let people park there from eight to five, maybe that could happen.
Okay, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, we'll work with the developer to address this, because it does, doesn't fall on the, I think they're doing $56 million as a proposal, so it's up to us to really work together to make it happen, and not be a hindrance with regards to that, and I think we have ample space, it's just identifying those and how do we work together to make that happen.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Madam Chair.
You have questions, Chair? Alderman McMenamin.
Thank you, Mr. Myers, my questions are for Mr. Williams.
Yes, Mr. Alderman?
Mr. Williams, as the others have said, thank you for your energy and your enthusiasm and your hard work and the significant funds that have already been spent on this project. My areas of concern, from listening to constituents that have called and emailed, are two, and we've already addressed the parking. The other major, major area of concern I have is the impact on our existing hotels downtown. You know, we don't have a, a hotel desert downtown, we've got very significant hotels pre-existing. Unfortunately, many of those hotels have been through financial difficulties over the years, you know, right across the street, we've got the, the Lincoln Hotel, that was heavily government subsidized, and it went into default, and then on this side, we've got the Wyndham, and it's had significant financial difficulties. We've got the State House Inn, that's across the street from where I've worked for 25 years, it's gone through two bankruptcies. We've got the Mansion View downtown, we've got a motel over by the, the Medical Center. So the, the question is, if we bring in DK Collections and you have a state-of-the-art operation, do we end up with an empty hotel building a quarter of a mile away, and, and lost jobs, and lost revenue, or are we just substituting one new revenue stream for a lost revenue stream down the road? So that's my major concern, so to answer these questions, I'd like to hear from the Springfield Lodging Motel Association, get them in here, and, and the owners of the current hotels, because we don't want to have owners coming in from Florida, Chicago, Dubai, or wherever, and then undercut our existing owners that have invested, for example, both the State, State House Inn, they've just gone through major, major spending without government help, without any government help. So, we don't want to then come in and help a, a really likable, attractive, state-of-the-art project, and then pull the rug out from under our existing owners in Springfield. So those are some of my concerns, I think those concerns are out there, and I was very surprised this ordinance got put on consent agenda just like this, we're talking about $7 million of very important TIF money, and this kind of reminds me of some of the past type of approaches to ordinances, where it just kind of gets through too fast, without enough thought for the long term, so, we really have to think this through, we're, we're devoting a huge amount of TIF money. So, again, I, I really commend the energy and the, the really notable names that are, local names that are associated with this project, even though the, the ownership may be not so local, but I think there's some serious concerns that are being expressed, and so I hope we'll think it through carefully.
So I, can I respond by chance, Council? I, I appreciate the question, and I, and I applaud you for representing your constituents in the requests that you've received. We've been working on this for two years, in the course of two years, we've talked to every brand, and so, to answer the question just about the impact of, let's focus on the downtown hotels, which on that point, Hilton operates the Abraham Lincoln, correct? That's a Doubletree. There's no way in the world they will be submitting a letter of interest for this project if it had a negative impact on that particular property if it's built. So, it's not going to, you know, really have any impact at all, I would say, and part of the reason and the thought that went into that was the type of hotel that we're putting on this site. So most of the hotels currently downtown, you have zero extended state hotels, zero. That's part of the thought process that went into this in terms of the research with respect to the type of hotels that would be impacted.
Alice, you're out of order.
The type of hotels that would be impacted, so, with respect to the traditional business, transient travelers, and, and tourists in that space, we're not really going to have much impact on those hotels. The other critical component about the Wyndham, and, and I say that, I bring that up on the Wyndham because it's up for sale, and part of the reason why it's up for sale, from talking to Marriott, Hilton, Hyatt, Choice, is the type of management company and ownership that's operating that hotel. And so, it's not necessarily that there is a room capacity issue, which is one of the reasons why we had to get a feasibility study done. The hotel feasibility study verifies and confirms that the 95 rooms we're talking about is going to have a very, very minimum impact. Initially, to your point, yes, because it's a new property, people are going to want to explore, but long-term, it's not going to have a negative impact on those two big pillars that you guys have had there. And then more importantly, I was speaking with Choice Brands who's considering buying the Red Roof Inn, they also have an interest of bringing that back, initially it was a Clarion Hotel under their flag, so they're interested in coming back into this market, and they don't necessarily see this project of 95 rooms impacting their acquisition if they are successful in capturing that and putting it back in their portfolio. So for the major three hotels that you have down here, the Wyndham, the Doubletree, and more importantly, the State House, we've done extensive work with evaluating with the brands on the impact of our room size, that's one of the reasons why we have 95 rooms versus 150 or 200 rooms. We're not trying to compete, we're trying to complement, and more importantly, offer something that those other hotels are not offering. We really can't speak to the management or ownership, and more importantly, their investment personally in those properties, which impacts the viability and long-term stability of those projects. And more importantly, going back to the TIF requests, we don't get a dime if we don't submit the proper, the proper paperwork, invoices to the Office of Planning and Economic Development, we get zero. And so, we, that's, and that's also only coming as a reimbursement based on our property tax generation, if we fall short and don't even hit 900,000 annually in terms of that property tax projection, if we're coming in at 700 or 600,000, then that number of 7.6 million is going to get reduced as well, but that's all tied to our filing, our proper paperwork, and doing what we need to do in order to provide that to the city.
I don't, I think the question is not whether you will be successful, it's the impact on the existing hotels, and if we can get some occupancy levels for the Wyndham, for the, for the Lincoln, for the State House Inn, for the Mansion View, I think that would help clear up some of the concerns that might exist.
I can forward you the STAR report that we had done in the hotel feasibility study that spoke to the average daily rates, the occupancy rates, the seasonal peak, all that information, which goes into evaluating projects before even construct anything. So we'll be happy, I'll make sure, here when I get my hands back on that, I'll share that with, I think I actually have it on file, I'll email that to Abby and Val tonight, make sure they get it to you.
Thank you.
Well, and I think Director Dahl has been very straightforward, and our occupancy rate right now is currently at 54%, and he wants to get that to 60%. We get a email weekly about new conventions coming to town, things that we haven't had here in years and years and years, so, that's, you know, a driving force in his office, if you want to talk, Chair.
Before he comes up.
Go ahead.
Mr. Williams, I appreciate your presentation, I was listening, I heard that you, you did an internal impact study, and no hotel would come in when they have other brands here, that they're, they wouldn't be competing with, that they wouldn't want to run out of business, so I do appreciate the fact that you've mentioned that in your, in your report, and I also appreciate the thoroughness of that report, and I'm very excited to see this project move forward. So I appreciate all the work that you all have done and put forth for the city of Springfield.
Uh, yeah, yes indeed, you know, anytime you add rooms to a market, you're concerned, right? One of the items that we look at is the rooms available, we look at occupancy, ADR, RevPAR in, in our industry, but rooms available is really what we're looking at, at this point. We have, as of the last two years, we have 3,899 rooms available in the city, we've had as high as 4,196 rooms, that was in 1998, 99, we had 4,144, so we're well below the number of rooms that we've had in the past. Our occupancy has been somewhat flat over the last couple of years, but that's other factors contributing to that. And again, the scope of this project, 95 rooms, if it was a large-scale convention hotel, I think there would be a, a, a lot of concern there, but, you know, by adding 95 rooms, it gets us just under 4,000 rooms, we've been there before, again, we know our goal, 60% occupancy down the pipeline, so, you know, there's really no concerns as far as a rooms available, or a supply factor, at least from the CBB standpoint.
Thanks, Director.
Thank you. Alderman Proctor.
Yeah, I've, I represent the downtown with the hotels that you just talked about, and most of them, none of them have reached out and showed any concern of this, and the Lodging Association is pretty good at, at letting us know when they oppose something, they're usually pretty near the here and for us when they let us know, not a win from nothing, they haven't spoken out at all, and so, I don't want to misspeak for them, but I don't think they have a concern about what you just brought up, Alderman McMenamin. And, so I, like, and one thing I think, I had kind of a question for Scott, he's kind of gone, but, you hit, Alan hit upon this, this is a different type of hotel, it's, I get a lot of people that come to me and ask about downtown occupancy and stuff, about are the rooms available, because we're in the busy season right now with legislative session, where the type of hotel you're talking about, the extended type of hotel, is in demand, and, so I got people that come to me and say, do you know of any rooms that could be available for three days out of the week, or four days out of the week, because I'm coming down for session, and some of them, they're over on Toronto Road, or they're over there by Target over there, and so, this would fit that niche, because I, I'd hope, maybe, do you track occupancy rate by extended room types, you know, is that something you guys track?
We can, we can get that report through the STAR, through Smith Travel Research, absolutely. We don't necessarily take a look at those specific numbers from the Bureau's standpoint, but sure, we can get, we have those numbers available through the individual hotels that we can, we can take a look at.
If you get that, maybe that would help with Alderman McMenamin's concern.
Yeah, exactly, and I'm particularly interested in downtown rooms, like if you, you could escape the whole region, total rooms, I'd be interested in the, the number of rooms downtown, over the, the course of time, and the occupancy of the downtown hotels, including State House Inn, they've just gone through that major, major reinvestment in room upgrades, et cetera.
Yeah, and I want to understand as well, though, is that, you know, we haven't been a convention hotel for, for many years, actually, and, or convention city, excuse me, for many years, so, we're getting back into the convention markets, and this will help us secure conventions downtown, and add those rooms ironically to that, to our bids, and so, it will help us down the road, these occupancy numbers, going back and forth, again, we've been flat as a city, but that's not necessarily because we have an oversupply of hotel rooms. And one more comment real quick, is that, remember too, that the state rate, the state lodging rate is going through J-Car right now, and we're expected to have a $15 increase in the state lodging rate July 1st.
That was my next question to you, good, good job.
So, you know, good for Alan and his, and his development, because they probably weren't expecting that at that time, it just came through last winter, it's good for the entire city, it's long overdue, it's a decade overdue, but $15, you add that per night with the amount of state rate rooms that we have, huge for the city, it'll just drive up our average daily rate.
And, and the hotel industry's been screaming about that for a lot of years.
We have, absolutely.
So, good job on that.
Yep.
I only have one more question for Ryan Bandi, and I think he knows what I'm going to ask.
I already know the answer.
No, you don't.
Well, yes, I do.
Um, I've had a lot of questions from the LBGTQ community about the loss of Club Station House, and if you're going to relocate, and I'm not meaning to put you on the spot, but it is of major concern.
Well, I've known about this project since August 2018, I've been working with Alan and Juan Key and Alderman Proctor, Chuck, and, you know, the, the thing about our downtown is, unfortunately, but for good for me, good for me is, there's a lot of vacant property, a lot of turnkey bars and establishments, and I'm, I'm actually very excited about this project, not just for, of course, being able to sell my buildings, but as a resident of Springfield, and what I think it's going to do for downtown, and it's going to give these other businesses that are kind of struggling in downtown, some opportunity to get new people downtown, and hopefully, bring some bars and make our downtown a lot more fun, like a lot of the other cities, as you know, I travel a lot, and I see another town. As you know, I travel a lot, and I see in other towns, and it makes me upset when I come back, and we don't have that opportunity. With the parking garage, we've had so many issues with it, behind Station House. We've had people throwing rocks, I've told you about that numerous times, Alderman Proctor, over the side. We had a guy a couple of years ago, unfortunately, kill himself by jumping off. And it's just been a huge liability. A couple of years ago, on St. Patrick's Day.
I'm not asking about any of that.
Yeah, okay.
I'm just asking.
Because I'm saying for, yes, I will be fine, but I'm ecstatic that this parking garage is getting.
Okay, but you didn't answer.
We're going to do something. I'm not exactly sure what my plans are yet.
Okay.
But I'm going to do something. I've got good employees and good customer base, and I'm going to do it.
People want you to stay.
I'm going to.
Anything else on this topic? Okay, moving on.
Hold a question.
I thought we already did.
Nope.
No.
Okay.
As amended.
As amended? We already voted on that, didn't we?
We did.
We voted on the amendment, but we need to vote.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Consent.
Any other discussion?
Just that if anybody wants to talk about this next week, I'm prepared to pull it off the consent agenda, since the motion by Alderman Redpath to put it on consent. Mr. Myers, if you want to come back and if you have any further information, research, you know, that's what this is all about, to let everyone have a voice. So there will be an opportunity to talk about this some more next week, if needed.
Consent.
Move to consent, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
2019-132, an ordinance authorizing extension through February 29, 2020 of contract RFP LL 16-18 with Baker &amp; Taylor Incorporated to provide library materials and approving a payment for an amount not to exceed $300,000 through February 29, 2020 for Lincoln Library.
Move to consent.
Second.
Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
2019-133, an ordinance authorizing payment of $29,649 to Mark Cordes, a Springfield police officer, to settle a workman's compensation claim, case number 18-WC-36031.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2019-134, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of proposals and execution of agreements for sale of city-owned property consisting of 28 parcels for a collective amount of $18,1691 for the Office of Budget and Management.
Consent.
Second.
Question? Is this for the vacant lots? Yes. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Alderman Hanauer.
How soon will the ones that didn't sell go back up? And are we going to drop some of the stipulations on them? I thought you, I was asking you, Mayor, sorry.
At this point, there hasn't been a discussion about doing another RFP just yet. We have these ones that are approved. I think we're holding a few other ones pending the sale of those ones. And we have some that are supposed to go back. Well, the RFP opens June 1st, so we've had some calls and interest. So we're asking them to submit proposals on those. And as we get them, we'll timestamp them and go through the process. So I think we're waiting until at least June 1st to see what kind of interest we have to know whether we need to go back out, or just continue accepting the applications as they come in.
Thank you. I'd just really like to get these off so we don't have to mow them, you know, and we can get them back on the tax roll. So even if it's, you know, $25 a year, whatever, it's us money that we're dealing with, so, thank you.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
There's a motion for consent.
Is there a second?
There is.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
General City Business, 2019-135, an ordinance approving the appointment of Silas Johnson to the Springfield Planning and Zoning Commission.
Motion for debate.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
2019-136, an ordinance approving the appointment of Annie Brooks to the Lincoln Library Board of Trustees.
Move to debate.
Second. All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
2019-137, an ordinance to increase the number of Class D liquor licenses by one for Kingpin Bowling Lane, Kingpin Bowling LLC doing business as Kingpin Lanes located at 3118 East Sangamon.
Consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there any unfinished business? Yes?
Yeah, I'd ask Jim Kuzin to come up and speak to the Leadwell Clinic being open, or Director McCarthy, if you'd like to speak to that, as open today.
Good evening. We had a ribbon cutting today at the new Leadwell facility, it's in the former Dr.'s Hospital. Our former location on South Sixth Street near the Fit Club. We closed that on the 27th of February, and we moved to the new location. So far, the feedback we've gotten from our employees, they're very pleased with it. We're getting increased utilization at our clinic at Horseman. So we're very excited about the prospects for continued success at the current and new location.
Thanks, Director.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business? Alderman Redpath.
Corporation Council, we collected the fines that Walmart was assessed in their parking violation.
They have not been paid yet.
And when will those be collected?
Right now, they're finishing compliance. We will be talking with their council, I'm thinking sometime in the next 30 days, I think is their final deadline to finish their restriping and some of the things that they're doing. So I'll be able to give you a follow-up, but they're past the time actually to appeal it. This gets very technical, but, so at some point, it will literally become a lien on the property.
Thank you.
Any new business?
New business, go ahead.
Alderman Donlin.
Madam Chair, thank you. I believe that one of us celebrated a birthday yesterday. Can you tell me who that was?
It was me.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. 29 again.
One more thing, congratulations to Alderman Fojenzi for his new baby girl.
McKenna.
Granddaughter, yes?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Oh, he's getting choked up, see? He said he would. Alderman McMenamin?
Is Director Dahl still here? Well, my question for Director Dahl would have been, is there a St. Patrick's Day parade Saturday at noon in Springfield?
Yes.
Yes.
A guy named.
Very good.
A guy named Joe McMenamin, better know that.
All right, just thanks for the clarification.
Any other new business?
Southeast High School playing at Bank of Springfield Center. Tip-off seven minutes ago.
Yep. Alderman Hanauer.
I want to offer congratulations to Franklin Middle School. Their girls won the seventh grade IESA state volleyball title. So our grade schools are doing great in sports and all that, so congratulations to them.
Shouldn't you also mention SHG Girls? SHG Girls.
That was last week.
Yeah, but I don't know that anybody ever said anything.
Uh huh, the mayor did.
Mayor did?
Yes. Are there any citizens' requests to address the committee? No? I scared off Alice. Oh, yes, Alderman.
I have one more announcement. We are going to postpone the quarterly meeting for the utilities, and we're going to hold two meetings next quarter. So those will be scheduled soon, but the one for this quarter has been canceled. We're going to wait until we get some information in the IRP.
Goodie.
Thank you.
If anyone, if anyone has anything that they would like to see on the agenda, they should contact either you or Alderwoman Turner.
Correct, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have an executive session?
I hate to inform you, yes, ma'am. Just 10 minutes.
Just?
Pending probable amenable litigation.
Motion for executive session for pending probable litigation. Moving along, must have a presentation without this. Oh, mine.
Do we have a motion to re-adjourn?
So move.
And?
Motion to reconvene to an executive session.
Re-convene from an executive session. Yes, re-adjourn, same thing.
Motion to.
Motion, do we have a motion to adjourn? Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll paper.
Yes, we always do. It's a black hole.